Morning, everyone. Hour has come. We have a quarrel. I would ask that all guests and visitors please retire behind the rail. The members have taken their seat. We're going to come to order. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Father John Babelwich of Our Lady of Calvary Catholic Church. He is here today as the guest of Councilman O'Neill. I would ask all members and guests and visitors to please rise.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. God is love. In the desire to make us share in this love, He sent His Son, He sent His Son, God, into the world to come to our aid and gentle kindness to help those who are weak, sick, or unfortunate. In His great love for all of us, Christ said that whatever you do for the least among us, you do for Him. He called those who show mercy blessed of His Father and promised them eternal life. Let us pray for the Lord's richest blessing, or the members of City Council, who are devoted to helping their brothers and sisters. And we pray together, we pray. The love of Christ has gathered us together into one. Let us rejoice and be glad in Him. Let us fear and love the living God, and love each other from the depths of our heart. Therefore, when we are together, let us take heed not to be divided in mind. Let there be an end to bitterness and quarrels, an end to strife, and in the midst be Christ our God. And in the company with the blessed, may we see Your face in glory, Christ our God, pure and abounded joy forever and ever, amen.
Amen.
Let us pray. Blessed are you, Lord, God of mercy, who through your Son gave us a marvelous example of charity and the great commandment of love for one another. Send down your blessings on these your servants. Help them to do the work so beautiful for Philadelphia. We ask to bless our council, to strengthen them in all their deliberations. When they are called on in times of need, let them faithfully serve you and their neighbor. We ask this through Christ our Lord, amen. And may Almighty God bless you all, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Thank you. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting Thursday, September 18th, 2014. The Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, September 18th, 2014 be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved improperly second at the meeting of the Journal, Thursday, September 18th, 2014. Stand and approve. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. The next order of business is request for leave of absence. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there is a request for a leave of absent by Councilwoman Marion Tasco.
Thank you. Leave shall be granted. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Thank you. Chair at this time recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Mr. President, at this time, I request the leave of absence, but voting aye on all bills and resolutions for today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Leave shall be granted. Thank you, Councilwoman, and shall be noted. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to thank everyone who has come down today to witness their government in action. We really appreciate you taking time out of your day to come down and give us a visit. We hope that your experience today is an extremely pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. Again, thank you very much. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones, who will present a resolution recognizing the 30th anniversary of Philadelphia Minority Business Enterprise Development Week. With Angela Dal Burton and those accompanying her, please join the Councilman at the podium. And joining Councilman Jones, we have Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez, and Councilman O., and Councilman
Incredibly, today we stand to recognize the 30th annual celebration of the Philadelphia Minority Enterprise Development Week here in Philadelphia. The theme this year is breakthroughs through innovation. And I guess we could not talk about inclusion, affirmative action in contracting, nor employment, without mentioning three names. First one is the late, great Lucian Blackwell. Second name is W. Wilson Good, our former mayor. And the third was an administrator that no one heard of before 17500. His name was John Macklin. And what he did was to look at the data that was produced by the various purchasing departments, and he discovered that less than one half of a percent...
Less than one tenth of one percent.
Excuse me, I stand corrected. Less than one tenth of one percent was found to have gone to African-American, other minorities, and women-owned businesses in the city of Philadelphia's purchasing process. And these three individuals got together, working with council, to create legislation that changed things. And in 17500, it evolved to today's OEO. But I can stand here today and say that we have achieved 28% DBE participation in the city of Philadelphia. And no, it's not perfect, but it's sure better than what it used to be. And you can clap to that. So we present this resolution supporting the National Minority Business Development Agency and recognizing the 30th anniversary of Philadelphia's Minority Enterprise Development Week from the 29th of September through the 4th of October 2014 for providing critical information fostering growth and competitiveness for minority business in the community and in Philadelphia.
Whereas since 1983, the United States President has proclaimed a National Minority Enterprise Development Week observance to recognize the outstanding achievements of minority business enterprises and to honor those corporations and financial institutions that support minority business development. Annual regional conferences and activities are organized by the United States Department of Commerce's Minority Business Development Agency in collaboration with the United States Small Business Administration's Office of Government, Contracting, and Business Development. And...
Whereas the MedWeek celebration was started locally in Philadelphia in 1984 to honor and promote minority-owned businesses in the Philadelphia area. The organizers of the first MedWeek activities were Barbara Daniel Cox, former director of Mayor Wilson Good's Women's Commission, and Bilal Abdul Quayum, Assistant to the Deputy Director of the City Commerce Department, and...
And whereas the 30th anniversary of MedWeek is chaired by the African-American Chamber of Commerce of PA, New Jersey, and Delaware, the Asian-American Chamber of Commerce of Greater Philadelphia, the City of Philadelphia Commerce Department, the Greater Philadelphia Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, and the Minority Business Development Agency. For one week, business leaders from across the region will host various workshops focused around this year's theme, breakthrough, growth, and innovation.
Whereas the 2014 MedWeek celebration marks a major milestone for the minority business community. While progress has been made, continuous efforts are needed around minority business development. A recent study released by Engage, a student-run think tank at the University of Pennsylvania, indicated that a shift in growing industries required more highly-skilled, college-educated workers, which is not characterized by many Philadelphia minorities. This is one of the major initiatives that the African-American Chamber of Commerce and other business leaders is looking into changing in the coming year.
Whereas Philadelphia is home to so many creative, hard-working entrepreneurs, our economy is experiencing rapid growth. Buildings are being erected and renovated. Healthcare is expanding, and our financial system is stable, and stock market indexes are at an all-time high. Philadelphia is ranked third in construction growth across the United States of America. Hospitality and tourism are on the rise, along with the expansion of bridges, highways, ports, rail system, and the airport here in Philadelphia. MedWeek is an opportunity for these local businesses to learn, grow, and connect the dots that will take their companies to the next level.
And whereas the 2014 Philly MedWeek will kick off with the 2014 MedWeek Award Reception, which takes place on Monday, September 29th, 8:00 a.m. in the mayor's reception room downstairs in City Hall.
Be it resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that it hereby supports the National Minority Business Development Agency and recognizes the 29th of September to the 4th of October 2014 as Philadelphia Minority Enterprise Development Week, which provides critical information, resources, opportunities, and inspiration to foster the trajectory for growth and sustainability in the minority business development community. Further resolve that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to the Philadelphia MedWeek Committee as evidence of the strong support and sincere sentiments of this legislative body, introduced by a member of Councilman Curtis Jones, and sponsored, supported by all members of Philadelphia City Council. Congratulations.
Chair recognizes Ms. Dal Burton for remarks.
Thank you, President Clark. Good morning, everyone. And thank you to all the members of City Council for this wonderful, wonderful acknowledgement. I will tell you on behalf of the 2014 MedWeek Committee that this resolution means a great deal. It means the consistent support that we've had from council over the past 30 years, and we truly appreciate that. The members of the co-chairing committee have been noted. I want to repeat them because it is clear that over the last couple of years, we've begun to collaborate in new and creative ways. And we want to make sure that we are connecting the dots as major advocates for minorities in this business community. So the co-chairs include the African-American Chamber of Commerce, the Greater Philadelphia Hispanic Chamber, the Asian-American Chamber, the Pennsylvania Minority Business Development Agency, and the Philadelphia Commerce Department, not only the Office of Economic Opportunity, but the Philadelphia Industrial Development Corporation as well. We have over 20 major sponsors and stakeholders this year who join us in expressing our gratitude for this acknowledgement. And some of those major sponsors include the University of Pennsylvania, Drexler University, Temple University, the airport, the Water Department, the Department of Human Services, American Airlines, Saks Fifth Avenue... I'm Saks Fifth Avenue, sorry. Goldman Sachs.
Shop.
Slightly different.
You know what's going on after this?
Too much online, too much online. And the Convention Center, just to name a few. You have our programs at your seats. All of our sponsors are listed there. And on the back of that program is a list, is a conference at the glance for the whole week of over 20 events. This year, yes, the theme is growth through innovation. And as we celebrate our business community, we acknowledge the contribution of our legislators in helping to institutionalize a structure of support and accountability for minority, women, and disabled-owned business enterprises. We also honor a man who tipped the scales 31 years ago, when he commissioned a study to measure disparity, economic disparity, within our business community. Managing Director W. Wilson Good, and subsequently Mayor Good, exemplified the vision and leadership that launched a sea change in the growth and development of minority and women-owned businesses. Mayor Good's administration and this City Council mobilized the resources of the city to champion the inclusion of disadvantaged businesses on city contracts, thereby ensuring the longevity and prosperity of those enterprises that were ready, willing, and able to accept the challenge. In recognition of the 30th anniversary of the Philadelphia Minority Enterprise Development Week, we acknowledge the contributions of Mayor W. Wilson Good, of Mayor Michael Nutter, and this City of Philadelphia City Council. We acknowledge by celebrating the successes of our business community and showcasing their best practices for those who are still on the path to success, by improving access to resources and contracting opportunities in the local and global marketplace. And next week, we will be talking about millions of dollars in contracts with and outside of city government. And finally, by raising our collective commitment and vigilance in the measure of our impact as advocates for the minority business community and the communities that they serve. The 2014 MedWeek celebration includes programs that provide insight, resources, business relationships, and contracting opportunities. Programs extend from the mayor's reception room to the Navy Yard, from the Greater Philadelphia Chamber to the Federal Reserve Bank, from the Enterprise Center to the Barnes Museum, and to the Water Department Fox Street Headquarters, and so much more. So as we, as you can see, leaders within the public, private, and nonprofit sectors have accepted the call to action. In the future, we hope business owners reflect on 2014 as the year they began to fully appreciate the power of innovation, of networking, and navigating the business process. Their collaboration and commitment to excellence is the key to building the capacity that will be required in the expanding public, private, and nonprofit sectors. So we hope all of you will join us on September 29th to October 4th, as we celebrate our history, but more importantly, reaffirm our commitment to building businesses and putting people to work. And I want to give a special thank you to Mayor Nutter, and also to the President of City Council, President Del Clark, to Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown, Councilman Jones, and Councilman O., who will personally participate in MedWeek this year. We do hope to see all of you. At this time, I'd like to introduce Stephen Scott Bradley, who is the CEO of the African-American Chamber, for brief remarks. Thank you again.
Good morning, everyone. On behalf of the committee, I just wanted to stand here and thank President Clark for acknowledging us. And I just want to encourage everybody to talk to your constituents. We have a lot planned, and it's not going to be a success unless we get residents and citizens of the city to come out and support MedWeek. We're excited about celebrating 30 years. We're excited about the support we're getting from the City Council. But in order for it to be successful, we need all the citizens to take advantage of these resources. Again, thank you, and have a good day.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That concludes our presentations. Before we move to communications, I would ask that we have a moment of silence for John P. McNally. Most of you don't know him, but John was a person who worked in City Hall. He worked on all our sound systems in the chamber and the caucus, and assisted pretty much every council member on all of the events in untimely passing. I was just asked for a moment of silence briefly. The next order of business is communications. Chair requested the Sergeant of Arms deliver the messages from the mayor to the Chief Clerk. Thank you. Mr. Decker, would you please read those messages?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on September 19th, 2014, I signed the following bills, which were passed by council at its session on September 11th, 2014, Bill Number 140515 and Bill Number 140516. And I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your Honorable Body an ordinance amending Bill Number 140144A, approved June 19th, 2014, entitled, "An Ordinance to Adopt a Capital Program for the Six Fiscal Years 2015 Through 2020 Inclusive," by adding and revising certain projects, amounts, and sources. And, "An Ordinance Amending Bill Number 140145A, approved June 19th, 2014, entitled, 'An Ordinance to Adopt a Fiscal 2015 Capital Budget, by Adding and Revising Certain Projects, Amounts, and Sources.'" And, "An Ordinance Authorizing and Approving the Modification of a Service Agreement Between the City of Philadelphia and the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development, relating to the refinancing of certain bonds, approving the issuance by the Philadelphia Authority for industrial development of bonds, notes, or other evidences of indebtedness in one or more series, or in a combined series with certain other authorized indebtedness, to refinance certain bonds, and authorizing and approving the obligation of the City of Philadelphia to pay in full when due the service fee and other amounts payable under the service agreement, all under certain terms and conditions."
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Mr. Decker, you have any other communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you so much. This time, we'll have the introduction of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one privilege resolution.
Thank you, Counselman.
A privilege resolution recognizing and honoring Barbara Salapek on her retirement after 25 years as a full-time volunteer at the St. Francis Inn, a soup kitchen and shelter located in the Kensington neighborhood of Philadelphia.
That resolution will be on today's final passes count, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I introduce one bill on your behalf.
Thank you, Counselwoman.
An Ordinance Authorizing and Approving the Modification of a Service Agreement Between the City of Philadelphia and the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development, relating to the refinancing of certain bonds, approving the issuance by the Philadelphia Authority for industrial development of bonds, notes, or other evidences of indebtedness in one or more series, or a combined series, with certain other authorized indebtedness.
That bill will be referred to. Committee, Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill and two resolutions on your behalf.
Thank you, Counselman.
An Ordinance Amending Chapter 9800 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled, "Landlord and Tenant Rent Control," by requiring adequate notice to tenants regarding rent increases and adequate notice to landlords in the case of a tenant's decision not to renew a lease.
That bill will be referred to Committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled, "Sitting on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on," situated in the 47th ward of the City of Philadelphia.
That resolution will be on next week's final passes count.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled, "Sitting on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on," situated in the 29th and 47th wards of the City of Philadelphia.
That resolution will also be on next week's final passes count, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Counselman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two bills and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Counselman.
You're welcome.
An Ordinance Amending Chapter 193900 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled, "Tax Exemptions for Longtime Owner Occupants of Residential Properties," by specifying certain circumstances sufficient to demonstrate equitable ownership of a property under the Longtime Owner Occupants Program.
That bill will be referred to Committee.
And an Ordinance Amending Chapter 10800 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled, "Safety," by prohibiting the sale, possession, or use of toy or imitation firearms, which substantially duplicate or can be reasonably perceived to be actual firearms.
That bill will also be referred to Committee.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia redevelopment authority for the redevelopment and urban of a portion of the Pointe Breeze urban area identified by house number and street address as 2025 Federal Street.
That resolution will be on next week's final passes count, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one bill on behalf of Councilwoman Marion Tasco.
Thank you, Counselwoman.
An Ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Rising Sun Avenue, Geneva Road, Westford Road, and Tabor Road.
That bill will be referred to Committee, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Nielsen.
I have one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Counselman.
A privileged resolution recognizing October 2014 as Dyslexia Awareness Month. A privileged resolution recognizing October 2014 as Dyslexia Awareness Month in Philadelphia and calling on educators and local educational agencies to provide equal educational opportunities for all students through awareness of the importance of early recognition of dyslexia and the benefits of evidence-based interventions.
That resolution will be on this week's final passes calendar. And chair recognizes Councilman Nielsen. I'm sorry, O'Brien. You did that already.
Yeah. You're feeding into his ability to confuse our personalities here.
Councilman, you knew guys. I'm still trying to get used to you knew guys.
I have one privileged resolution today, Mr. President.
Thank you. Sorry, Councilman.
A privileged resolution recognizing the work of Philadelphia's own Luisa Sola and her book, "American Boys: The True Story of the Lost Seventy-Four of the Vietnam War", which brings to light the story of the 74 sailors that perished on the USS Frank E. Evans during the Vietnam War.
And that resolution will be on the final passes calendar, and the chair recognizes Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill introduced by Councilman James Kenny and myself and co-sponsored by all members of City Council.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Title 10 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Regulation of Individual Conduct and Activity" to add a new Chapter 10, 2100, entitled "Hate Crimes" to provide for additional penalties for criminal conduct motivated by hatred towards certain characteristics of other persons.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee, and the chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two bills, one on your behalf, two privileged resolutions, one on Councilwoman Bass's behalf.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance providing for the submission of the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia the proposals set forth in a resolution approved by council proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Hall of Honor Charter relating to the creation of a new Department of Planning and Development headed by a cabinet-level director to oversee the city's planning, zoning, licensing, inspection, enforcement, and housing functions.
That will be referred to committee.
And an ordinance authorizing and directing the installation of a traffic signal on Parkside Avenue at the intersection of North 50th Street.
That will be referred to committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring the mayor's commission on people with disabilities, Philadelphia's Department of Parks and Recreation, and the Global Abilities Foundation on the occasion of their fourth annual Rec Fest.
And that will be on today's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Hall of Honor Charter relating to the creation of a new Department of Planning and Development headed by a cabinet-level director to oversee the city's planning, zoning, licensing, inspection, enforcement, and housing functions.
That resolution will be referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Title 4 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "The Philadelphia Building, Construction, and occupancy Code" by amending Subcode PM, the Philadelphia Property Maintenance Code, by adding the 10th Councilman of District to the list of areas covered by certain building standards.
That bill will be referred to committee, and the chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution designated the week of Monday, October 6 through Monday, October 13, 2014, as Christopher Columbus Italian-American Heritage Week in the city of Philadelphia. This is done in celebration of the festivities commemorating Columbus's historic voyage to the New World and honoring Shaz Paul Minteri as Grand Marshal of the 2014 Philadelphia Columbus Day Parade.
And that resolution will be on today's final passes calendar, and the chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I offer two resolutions and one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance providing for the submission of the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia of an amendment to the Philadelphia Hall of Honor Charter establishing and defining the responsibilities of the International Trade and Investment Authority, fixing the date of the special election for such purpose, prescribing the form of ballot questions to be voted on, and authorizing the appropriate officers to publish notice and to make arrangements for the special election.
That bill will be referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution respectfully requesting that the Pennsylvania Legislature authorize an additional 300 taxi medallions to provide modern green wheelchair-accessible taxi cabs with bike racks to meet the existing needs of Philadelphia's undeserved ridership.
That resolution will be on next week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Hall of Honor Charter to provide for the creation, appointment, powers, and duties of an international trade and investment authority.
Thank you. That resolution will be referred to committee, and that concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions. We will now have reports from committee. The next chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell for a report from the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Finance reports out one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, the Committee on Finance, which is referred to by Number 140609, entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing and Approving the Execution and Delivery of a Service Agreement Between the City of Philadelphia and the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development relating to the financing of additional operating funds for the school district of Philadelphia for fiscal year 2015 only, approving the issuance by the Philadelphia Authority for industrial development of bonds, notes, or other evidences of indebtedness in one or more series to finance such additional operating funds, and authorizing and approving the obligation of the city of Philadelphia to pay in full when due the service fee and other amounts payable under the service agreement. Respectfully reports it as considered and amended the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 140609.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly second that the rules of council be suspended so as to allow first reading this day of Bill Number 140609. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. And that concludes our reports from committee, and we will now have the consideration of the calendar. Note that the bill just reported from committee with suspension of the rules has been deemed may have had a first reading. This bill will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the chair recognizes Councilman Jones for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the final and second reading final passes calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers 140671, 140700, 140702, 140703, 140704, and 140707, and 140001A. All of the resolutions and bills are being held.
Thank you, Councilmen. Before considering these bills and resolutions on the final passes calendar, we will have our public comment session. The public comment session will go as follows. There will- your name will be called when it is your time to speak. If you are interested in speaking on a bill or a resolution on the final passes calendar today, I would ask that you sign up at the table to my left. If you have already done so, your name will be called. You will go to the podium in the middle of the council. There's a device on the podium. When the light on that device turns green, it is your time to speak. When it turns yellow, you have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When it turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to the guidelines and conclude your remarks. You will have three minutes for your remarks. And at this time, call Mr. Decker to read the first name on the witness list.
There are no speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
All right. I can tell by the way you were looking at me, Mr. Decker, as I was giving that long explanation that there were no- there was no one here to testify, but the rules require me to say that anyway. Thank you very much. I have a little levity in this job. This time, we will now consider the resolutions and bills on the second reading and final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 140671.
A resolution urging further action to enact legislation to designate the Medical Center of the Department of Veterans Affairs located at 3900 Woodland Avenue in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania as the Corporal Michael J. Cresens Department of Veterans Affairs Medical Center.
And chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and Resolution 140671 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 140700.
A resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled "The Service Sitting on Lots of Pieces of Ground With the Buildings and Improvements There On," situated in the 15th, 18th, and 37th Wards of the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Ms. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and Resolution 140700 is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 140702.
A resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled "The Service Sitting on Lots of Pieces of Ground With the Buildings and Improvements There On," situated in the 7th and 37th Wards of the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kionne Sanchez.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Adoption.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, 140702 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 140703.
A resolution also naming West Vanango Street between 5th Street and 7th Street Joaquin Rivera Way to honor the memory of Joaquin Rivera and to recognize his life and memorialize his lasting legacy.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Kionne Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and 140703 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 140704.
A resolution calling on the Pennsylvania Department of Education and the Pennsylvania Secretary of Education to thoroughly investigate any and all allegations of curriculum deficiencies reported within the school district of Philadelphia that have been properly filed and received by the secretary.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
And I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and Resolution 140704 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 140707.
A resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled "The Service Sitting on Lots of Pieces of Ground With the Buildings and Improvements There On," situated in the 25th, 31st, and 39th Wards of the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Oh. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, 140707 has been adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 140001-A.
An ordinance amending Chapter 10, 800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Safety" by providing for ending the existing procedure of mandatory custody arrests for the crime of marijuana possession and by requiring the reporting of the number of arrests and related information with respect to those arrested for marijuana possession.
Chair recognizes Councilman Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. President. Based on the passes of last week's bill, I move that Bill Number 140001A be withdrawn.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, Bill Number 14001-A is withdrawn. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution recognizing and honoring Barbara Salapek on her retirement after 25 years as a full-time volunteer at the St. Francis Inn, a soup kitchen and shelter located in the Kensington neighborhood of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Kenny.
Chair recognizes Councilman Kenny.
Move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing October 2014 as Dyslexia Awareness Month in Philadelphia and calling on educators and local educational agencies to provide equal educational opportunities for all students through awareness of the importance of early recognition of dyslexia and the benefits of evidence-based interventions, introduced by Councilman Nielsen.
Chair recognizes Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing the work of Philadelphia's own Luisa Sola and her book, "American Boys: The True Story of the Lost Seventy-Four of the Vietnam War", which brings to light the story of the 74 sailors that perished on the USS Frank E. Evans during the Vietnam War, introduced by Councilman O'Brien.
Chair recognizes Councilman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring the mayor's commission on people with disabilities, Philadelphia's Department of Parks and Recreation, and the Global Abilities Foundation on the occasion of their fourth annual Philadelphia Rec Fest, introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Who? Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Mr. President, on behalf of Councilwoman Bass, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution designated the week of Monday, October 6 through Monday, October 13, 2014, as Christopher Columbus Italian-American Heritage Week in the city of Philadelphia. This is done in celebration of the festivities commemorating the Columbus- Columbus's historic voyage to the New World and honoring Shaz Paul Minteri as Grand Marshal of the 2014 Philadelphia Columbus Day Parade, introduced by Councilman Squilla.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That concludes our calendar, and at that time, I would ask if there is any speeches on the part of a minority. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to give a last request that anybody who believes they are musically talented, whether they are a professional musician or someone who is just hoping to be a musician one day, you have until next week, September 30, to submit on our website, www.phllive.org, your music video. Can be simply something you record yourself on your cell phone, but you can win $1,000 performance in front of 6,000 people thanks to the Dell Music Center, free studio recording time, and other prizes. So please don't miss this opportunity. It's all about the creative economy in Philadelphia. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I refuse to respond to that, sir. I had something really funny to say, but I'm not going to go there. I'm not going to go there today. Chair recognizes any speech on the part of a majority, and the chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very quickly, two announcements. One, tonight, we will be honoring the new president-elect of the American Bar Association, Paulette Brown. It'll be in Conversation Hall tonight between 5:30 and 7:30 p.m. Many council members will be joining us. This is a big thing and a first for the Bar Association. The second announcement is that many members of council will be participating in midweek in various workshops, including yourself, but Councilman O. and I are co-venturing on a not-red state, not-blue state, but a green state of inclusion for all companies. He's been all around the world, and now he's back, and we will be dealing with the opportunities at the Commonwealth level for small businesses. The title of the workshop is "The Commonwealth as Your Partner," and we will be at, on Tuesday, September 30, 6 o'clock, at the Greater Philadelphia Chamber of Commerce, 200 South Broad Street, 7th floor, and we would like all to come out to hear about what opportunities are available and what opportunities are proposed at the state level. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a follow-up to Councilman O.'s exciting talent venture, I'm going to make a public appeal. The next year, when you do this, you will include different genres of dance so that that performing arts as well can be celebrated. I have two announcements. In 2010, Mr. President, my office and I took a closer look at the disposal of prescription drugs, and the reason why we did this was our discovery that every year, 2.1 million children ages 12 to 17 report abuse drug- prescription drug abuse. Further, we learned that in 24 metropolitan cities, including Philadelphia, when our water was tested, drinking water, 56 different pharmaceuticals were found in our testing water. And so the good news is that Councilwoman Denny O'Brien joined us and raised the bar on this again, and as a partner with him, we want to remind our listeners and our viewers that this Saturday, September 27, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m., is National Drug Abuse Disposal Prescription Day, and we're asking everyone, and most notably, parents who have children, that they seek to dispose drugs in a way that's proper and correct. And then, secondly, in keeping with midweek, for the sixth consecutive year, my office will be joining with P.I.D.C. to bring together about three dozen small business people down at the Navy Shipyard, which is still offers enormous opportunity, and we'll be giving a full panel presentation followed by a tour of that fabulous economic engine down there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and chair recognizes Councilwoman Kionne Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Later this afternoon, the Special Commission established by the mayor will be publicly releasing a report. There's been-